We need to catch them in the safety net, so to speak. That's the purpose for the registration. Housing Solutions is a one-stop place for housing. That's why that's important for us to be partnered with them. If we want to get them into a recovery housing program or permanent housing, we have to start with Housing Solutions. So at ours, we also do meal sites. We have a meal site here in Port Orchard. We've been doing for, well, June 12th of 2002 was the first time we did it. We've been doing it almost every Saturday since then. The Kitsap Rescue Mission does. We're right now at the Lutheran Church up on Mitchell. So along with that, the mayor and his prodding, I would call it, at our outdoor homeless meetings that we're having here in Port Orchard, we started, we brought our portable shower over. We're bringing portable showers so that we can start. I did a homeless walk myself here in Port Orchard back in 2015 in the wintertime. You don't get, there's no place to get a shower. In Port Orchard, there's almost absolutely nothing. The shower is very important to them. So we brought that over here. We're in a trial program to see if we can actually make it work for them. And that's part of the outreach, to reaching out to them and finding them. And then clothing and hygiene. Harper Church, I don't know how many of you know Harper Church here in Port Orchard, they bring clothing and hygiene products to us every other Saturday. They were here with us last Saturday at the meal site that I'm talking about at the Lutheran Church. So they bring all that. They do that strictly out of their own church. It all comes from there with about a dozen volunteers come over and they leave, they come with four vans full of material in boxes and they leave with two. So we're doing the outreach, but we need to get into the recovery phase. We need to rescue them from themselves. That's what we want to do with the transitional housing or the transitional, intentional transitional communities. And when I say communities, it really is going to be a community within the community. A lot of people are telling us, we've already heard it here a couple of times, not in my backyard, I understand that. But if we can come up with a property, and that would be the Rescue Mission, get in contract with a property owner, whether to purchase or lease, we become the host and sponsoring unit then, and we start building a community. That community will most likely start out with an encampment. The purpose is to continue building that community into more of a sheltered environment where they're not in a, in a tent per se, but in tiny homes or even another, the county ordinance, which I know that doesn't really apply here, but there's three, three types of shelters there. There's membrane shelters, or what most people call tents. There's metal and wood structures approved in this ordinance. And we'd look to do something of the same. There's a piece of property here in Port Orchard, in the unincorporated part over by Retsal, that we're continuing negotiating with the property owner. It's outside the city limits, but it works out real well because there just isn't a lot of neighbors there. Retsal's the biggest neighbor, which usually aren't going to complain. And it's a piece of property we're looking at to do this with. Like I said, it is county, but this is for Port Orchard. We have literally five parts of the county that we have to work with. The Rescue Mission itself is in downtown Bremerton. So we're pretty central there. But we have Kingston, Bainbridge, we have Paulsbo, North Kitsap, Central Kitsap, all unincorporated, all the Silverdale area, and then South Kitsap. So the Kitsap Rescue Mission is looking at moving out into the different areas, Port Orchard being one of them. Like I said, this is my hometown. I'm the outreach manager for the Rescue Mission. I'm here more than I am there. So if you've had a chance to go through this, hopefully you'll see Phase One. In this portion of the program, we work in breaking the bondage that individuals have developed by removing all the encumbrances that hold the individual back. I know a lot of us would like to think that all they gotta do is get a job and they won't be homeless no more. I've heard that, I don't know how many times. I wished it was true. I really do. There's a lot to recovering somebody from their homeless lifestyle, whether it's been a day, a month, or a year, or even more, the ones that are chronic homeless, they call them. There's a lot, even to recover one person that's only been out there a week. Because they just kind of fall off the grid. Kind of hard to get a job when you've been wearing the same clothes for a week and sleeping on the ground. And it doesn't take them long to fall into some kind of an addiction when they live that way. So the recovery part, Phase One, is very, very difficult. Phase Two is focusing on developing individuals through life skills, work skills, and facing life's challenges and finances. We can't do that unless we have a place for them to live. Plain and simple. You just can't do that. We have a non-resident program that works for very few at the Rescue Mission. Because, and when they're in a non-resident program, they get guaranteed shelter. But still, and they have a place to store their stuff. Still, if they're not there all the time, and we have case managers who work with them, it's really difficult for anybody. We need to have them a place to stay. And Phase Three is the final stage that focuses on job search and then intellectual improvement, such as on-the-job training and higher education. We have a educational specialist that works at the Kitsap Rescue Mission. She does, she trains people, everything from learning to read and write, to GEDs, helps them write resumes, and continued education working with Olympic Community College. So as you see, we do a lot of this already. We just are looking to take it out into the communities and develop communities to do this within. And these communities, as the document says, one of the biggest problems we have is not in my backyard, and I understand that. But we have to prove, and we can only do this by performing, that we can be good neighbors. Because it's really up to the Kitsap Rescue Mission to organize this and put it together. The next page is what it costs for projects, and these are our costs. We're not asking taxpayer money. Even though Sheriff Simpson said, "If you can take some of my people from the jail, I'll give you money." Well, I wished he could give it to me out of his pocket, but it don't quite work that way. But if you look at it, it does cost quite a bit of money to set one up. The encampment budget isn't really bad to set one up, but the overnight shelter, when you look at that, you see big numbers on the bottom. That's because we have to man it with paid staff. Can't always work on volunteers. There's not very many of them, well, I guess it'd be like me, I'm a volunteer. But there's not very many people that do that. I'm retired completely, so I can afford to be a full-time volunteer. The history of the Rescue Mission is on the next page. Gives you an idea of what we've been doing. And then there's a list of everybody that's on the next page. A lot of your frequently asked questions are on the final page with answers. And if you have any others, I would gladly take them.
Questions for Joe?
I guess myself, I'd like to thank you for attending our committee meetings we've been having. I know we haven't, we've got the shelter, the cold weather shelter open. We haven't had as many guests as we'd like. We've had one or two a night, and I think that's about the same turnout we've been having at the showers, but we're just getting started.
Correct.
So appreciate you coming. I know our first business item after the proclamation I'm going to read next is the letter of support. Do you have a draft of what you'd like that letter to look like?
The endorsement letter for support?
Yes.
Yes, I can get one to you.
Okay, if you could get that to the clerk, that would be great.
Okay.
And we'll take, that's our first business item tonight. So if there aren't any other questions for Joe?
I don't have it with me, if that's what you mean.
No, that's fine.
But I can get it.
I can't write it here at the dais either.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I'm going to think it was two or three years ago, I attended a tiny home workshop over at the convention center in Bremerton. I can't remember who put it on, but the lady from Olympia spoke. And they had had a tent encampment that transitioned into a tiny home development. And I was wondering if you envisioned your tent encampment to be similar to that. It was quite structured. I mean, they had responsibilities to the people living there. They had almost a governmental-type structure. Are you envisioning something the same, or would this be a little more informal?
No, this is more of the same. Are you talking about Coyote Village in Olympia?
I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but I believe so.
That's probably the presenter you're talking about. Excuse me. Coyote Village in Olympia is the most successful one in the state of Washington. Some of our other neighboring states have some very successful ones, too. Most of them work on some basic principles. One of them is self-governing. Self-governing gives them responsibility, but also gives them ownership. Now, self-governing takes place with the umbrella organization, which would be the Kitsap Rescue Mission, the host or sponsoring organization overseeing it. It's much like what you do here in government. And it went, Coyote Village went from a tent city environment that rotated around the churches in the city of Olympia for 90 days at a time for quite a few years before they got their property out in an industrial area and developed a 30-home, tiny homes community with a big community center and community kitchen. And it's a very workable model. It has a great concept to it. The only change that I've seen, because I went down there and looked at it, their homes are 114 square feet, tiny homes. They have a toilet, but no shower. They have no means to heat anything up, and they actually have a mat that's, or a bed that's about as wide as this podium to sleep on. It really is as tiny as it could possibly be. There's been a lot of progress in the tiny homes since then. Their tiny homes community cost over $3 million to build on 1.8 acres. Reason being, they had to pay prevailing wages on everything. It was a government grant. The biggest part of it came from the state of Washington, which required prevailing wage, and they had all their tiny homes built there. Since then, the tiny home explosion has taken off, and there are many, many companies that are building tiny homes to be delivered in all kinds of sizes. The smallest one that I looked at was 198 square feet. That's a full shower. Full shower, bathroom, and a kitchenette. And a full twin-sized bed, so somebody or even a couple could sleep in it. But it would be something of that nature. It's a growing transitional community that would, the property would have to withstand what it can handle.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Deaner.
I have a general question. Have, what's the comparable size of a shipping container? And secondly, does it have to be an attached tiny home? Could they do like row houses that are, that would save on some of the construction?
There's a lot of research you can do on the internet on shipping containers. They even stack them, 20-footers and 40-footers. 20-footers make two 10-by-10 tiny homes. Virtually just a bedroom is what they are for the shipping containers. Now, they build full-on three-story houses out of shipping containers, too. Something else you could research. It economically makes a lot of sense. One of the biggest problems you have is the code, but that's something that can be worked on, because they made them look real nice. I mean, there doesn't take a lot of sheet metal work, and you can make that ugly old red container look pretty good. My experience with them, when I was working, I used to build shipping containers, put large refrigeration systems in them, send them overseas, and then put them all back together in the shipping containers. I put as many as 18 shipping containers together and made a fish processing plan out of it. So there's a lot of stuff you can do with them. Does it work? Yeah, we've actually been looking at shipping containers for our community building and classrooms and, you know, things of that nature. Security trailers, stuff like that.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Deaner.
So I think an endorsement is the right thing to do and is reasonable. What does that get us? We send that letter to Kitsap Rescue Mission, but what is that, how does that help?
The endorsement?
Yeah.
We want to let the public know that our community leadership is behind this concept. That's what we're looking for. The community leadership is behind it. It's very important that it's not just the cities and the county, but also the sheriff's department, the fire department, and our medical, our key medical facility here is now Franciscan. They're the ones that are giving us, they're the ones that really want this more than anybody else. The sheriff's department is seeing 65 to 70 people incarcerated all the time because they're homeless. That's a lot of money. So the reason we want the endorsement is that we want the, we want the individuals in the community to know that we're not fly-by-night and that we have the support of our community leadership in doing this.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll get right back to you.
Thank you.
And if, when, after we've taken action, if, Brandy's going to give you a card. And we'll talk more about this when we get to the next business item. So next, I have a, we have a presentation, it's the proclamation for Black History Month. I just felt this was a rather relevant proclamation with all the social injustice we've been seeing and reading about in the media. So with that, Black History Month is celebrated throughout the nation during the month of February. And whereas, Black History Month is a time to honor our diverse ancestry and our hidden history of civil, economic, professional, medical, and artistic achievements, and also serve as a reminder of the challenges that face all people of color and that of the work to eliminate barriers based on prejudice and ongoing. And whereas, Black Americans continue to make significant contributions to the growth of our nation in business and philanthropy as ministers, doctors, and nurses, as artists, as musicians, as professors and teachers, as lawyers and legislators, as soldiers and leading athletes. Black Americans have earned Olympic gold medals, medals of honor, and as slaves built the White House where the first Black president and his family resided for the last, past eight years. And whereas, we continue to be inspired by the vision of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and by the visions of local leaders such as former mayor, Seattle Mayor Norm Rice, Judge Theodore B. Spearman, Bishop Lawrence Robertson, Lilian and James Walker. And whereas, Black History Month serves as a reminder of the challenges that face people of color and other marginalized groups. There is still more to be done to ensure equality under the law and equal opportunity. And whereas, Black History Month theme for 2017, Healing Our Land, Healing Our History, is a reminder to appreciate what connects us, regardless of color, national origin, religion, sexual orientation, or disparate abilities. We move forward in the spirit of the Pledge of Allegiance with liberty and justice for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Robert Putansu, Mayor of the City of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim February 2017 as Black History Month in the City of Port Orchard and urge its citizens to join me in this observance. All right, we are on to 7A. Approval of, for the mayor to send a letter of support to Kitsap Rescue Mission for Intentional Transitional Community. So is there a motion?
I would like to make that a motion.
Go for it.
You, too?
Go for it.
We could read every other word. I move to approve Mayor Putansu to send a letter of support to Kitsap Rescue Mission for Intentional Transitional Communities.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion?
Okay, I will just, what I will do is, I don't have the draft letter yet. I'm probably not comfortable signing it until, you know, sending it out until I've had a chance to run it by you guys. So we'll draft a letter this week. I'll bring it back by, at the work study to circulate, and then we'll get it sent out shortly thereafter. So with that, all in, no, yes, Mr. Deaner?
I just wanted to observe that this has been on the radar in one form or another for many, many years. And it's finally exciting to see things starting to happen.
It's been heartwarming, the number of people that have been coming to the, you know, the housing committee that, ad hoc committee that we've had here in city halls. So, you know, some other folks have been meeting for a long time. In September, we started meeting, and we've accomplished a heck of a lot. And hopefully, we can get some folks to start to come and help them. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll work on a letter. So we are on to 7B. Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Number 007-16 to Extend Interim Subdivision Regulations for an Additional Six Month, Providing for a Public Hearing and Declaring an Emergency. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. On February 23rd, 2016, the city council adopted Ordinance 007-16, an interim ordinance regarding subdivisions for a period of one year. This ordinance repealed POMC Chapter 1672 and replaced that chapter with an updated interim Title 26 of the municipal code. Ordinance 007-16 was adopted as an emergency measure pursuant to RCW 3670A 390, which allows an interim zoning ordinance to be effective immediately and to continue in effect for a period of one year so long as the city staff adopt a work plan for implementation of a permanent code. The ordinance is adopted by a supermajority of the council, and a public hearing is held on the ordinance within 60 days of passage. The required public hearing was duly noticed and held on March 8th, 2016. Ordinance 007-16 expires on February 23rd, 2017. City staff has been working with the Citizens Development Regulations Review Committee, the Planning Commission, and the city attorney on a Unified Development Code, Title 20, Port Orchard Municipal Code, which will include an updated subdivision regulations. A draft of Title 20 was presented to the city council at the work study meeting of January 17th, 2017, and is being reviewed by the Planning Commission. In order to have sufficient time to complete the Unified Development Code and the updated subdivision regulations, staff proposes to extend the interim subdivision regulations for an additional period of six months. That's through August 23rd, 2017. However, staff will work towards finalization of Title 20 according to the established public participation and adoption schedule, which proposes adoption of Title 20 by June 30th, 2017. As previously indicated, an emergency ordinance requires a public, a public hearing to be held within 60 days of adoption. At this public hearing, the city council will take public testimony on an interim ordinance and may choose to adopt additional findings of fact in addition to those findings already included in an ordinance. However, the council is not required to adopt any additional findings. The staff recommendation is to adopt an ordinance and declare an emergency and hold the public hearing within 60 days as required under state law. And this is the first of two ordinances that have a very similar staff report, the second one being permit processing, which will follow this.
I move, Mayor? Yes?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Ordinance 007-16 to extend interim subdivision regulations for an additional six months, providing for a public hearing and declaring an emergency.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, back.
I would just like to say that at the work study, council did ask that the work be completed within, prior to the six months. And subsequent to that, we got a time schedule from the Community Development Department, which I very much appreciate, so.
Since that meeting, when we rolled that schedule out, we have held two additional meetings with the work group. We did finish the last of the code. They, of course, don't have everything they want in that code, and I assured them that there's, you know, additional stops on the route here. It's heading to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. It's heading here for a public, you know, hearing. So there's more opportunity to testify. But I felt there was good, you know, collaboration by everybody, and it was, you know, it was helping debate, so.
Mr. Bond?
I just wanted to add that the draft Unified Development Code will be online by Friday. There's a public notice that went to the paper today for Friday's paper, and so we're working to get those documents uploaded. And they'll be available for viewing. And there's also a 60-day comment period for written comments plus the hearing at the Planning Commission scheduled on that.
Did you, the draft document is, are there significant changes to the document that you gave us at the work study?
No, not significant, but if you remember, there were a couple of pieces that we were still waiting on from the attorney, and so we've completed those. And she's going through and giving it a last scrub, and we needed to update the definitions chapter as kind of the last step to tie up all the loose ends.
There were nine sections that we reviewed from, in the work group over the last two meetings.
My concern is, I don't read well online, and so can I get a hard copy of that draft?
Yes.
So I could start preparing.
Yes.
As well.
How many hard copies?
I have part of it.
Okay. Did you see the hands?
Yeah, I think so.
Can I see hard or paper? So four, four hard copies? I know John will read it online. Sean?
Imagine if I'm on the phone.
So, Skin, you want it up?
Yes, sir.
So are we encouraging minority reports from the work group and the Planning Commission where they differ with the recommended version?
We're not discouraging that, but I think the Planning Commission certainly has the opportunity. They just adopted new rules for, and procedures for operating, and they can't, those rules include provisions for a minority report. As far as the Development Committee, you know, I assume that anybody who has objections is going to participate in the comment process, and those will be provided to the Planning Commission.
Will staff be reporting on perhaps key objections?
Yeah, we plan on assembling a comment matrix, and so any of the comments that are received in writing or at the Planning Commission's public hearing will be logged, and we will provide a response as to whether or not that particular comment was addressed.
The two biggest objections I can speak to that, you know, I've been in the meetings is one, some in the Development Committee don't believe we should have a boundary line adjustment process at all, and they don't want one at all. We have one in our code now. Legal counsel's telling us we should have one. Other jurisdictions have it. I guarantee you, you're going to get written comment and testimony that we shouldn't. And I assured them that it's the council's, ultimately, the council's decision whether we have that in our code or not. The other objection is whether it's civil infractions.
Or criminal penalties.
Or criminal infractions for violations in the code. And there's folks that don't want it to be that harsh. And once again, I assured them that, you know, they'll have their day, and ultimately, that's the council's decision, you know, how strong the language is in our code. So those are the two big ones, I've heard. There's lots of little things that debated back and forth. And like I say, we've got a 60-day comment period, you know, Planning Commission, and then it'll be here, so. I think we've had a very, we've been, that's a year. This has been a very thorough process, I believe. And there's been compromise on both sides. Yes, sir.
So I heard that the Planning Commission is aware that they can do a minority report, and I heard that there's going to be comments, comments matrix put together. But what about the working group and any specific objections they may have? Will that be captured as well?
It'll be captured in their comments when they submit them on the final draft.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt, for the adoption of an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 007-16 to extend interim subdivision regulations for an additional six months, providing for a public hearing and declaring an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to seven, excuse me, 7C. Adoption of an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 008-16 to extend permit processing regulations for additional six months, providing for a public hearing and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bond, you're up.
Yes, thank you. This is the same situation we just dealt with, except that instead of subdivision regulations, you're dealing with the permit processing chapter. And our permit processing draft code that is under review is moving forward together as part of the Unified Development Code. And so I think essentially my entire report from a minute ago applies here as well.
These are traveling a parallel course.
Is there a motion? Mr. Deaner?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 8-16 to extend permit processing regulations for an additional six months, providing for a public hearing and declaring an emergency.
Second, a discussion of this motion. Hearing none, will you be voting on adoption of an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 008-16?
008-16 to extend Permit Processing Regulations for an additional six months, providing for a public hearing and declaring an emergency? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to seven D, Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter ten point one-two, Establishing Regulations and Fees Related to Parking, Stopping, Standing in Certain Areas of the City. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As a housekeeping measure in working with parking enforcement staff and to support the parking needs of the city's new permit center located at seven twenty Prospect, the city's Public Works Department continues to annually inventory existing signage to compile corrections, revisions, and/or modifications to the current code. I think it would be beneficial to just quickly go through those. So, if you look at the ordinance attached, you go to page eighty of one ninety-eight in the packet, under ten twelve two seventy C, we added section six that basically is a postmaster general requirement. We had just missed that in the last update. It'd come to our attention, so that's just a book, kind of a, it's just a bookkeeping to get that in so that we're concurrent with the postmaster general. The next one is on page eighty-four of one ninety-eight. This was discussed at the Land Use Committee that involved the parking in the industrial park and adding some signage there, and then on the main road, Lloyd Parkway, we're going to basically do some fog striping, so we'll resolve that issue. Then on page eighty-seven, we got rid of category sixty-four, which just talked about lot four, which is over by the most easterly of the waterfront lots, because that needed to come out of here, because we have a section in the code that just talks about the lot, so that was redundant. And then the last item, received a revised sheet, and so that has to do with, it's on page ninety-five of one ninety-eight, section thirty-eight, but it makes sense. First, let me read the beginning of ten, which is parking time limited on certain streets. When signs are erected by the Sydney Engineer in each block giving notice thereof, no person shall park a vehicle for longer than the time specified in this section on days specified in this section. Upon any street described as follows, except vehicles complying with residential parking permit. So, any of these streets have the residential parking permit allows them to not be inclusive of this. And so, when you look at thirty-eight, what we were adding on Prospect Street was for the two parking spots in front of the permit center to go to one-hour parking. We, it was, what was there before was on both sides, from Sydney Avenue to Geiger, there will be four-hour parking from eight to five, we're proposing to add, except we're posted at one-hour parking for the city permit center at seven twenty, so that was what we originally had. And then today, we added, holders of residential parking permits are not exempt from this restriction. So, basically, if somebody lives within a block of that area, they can't just park in the one hour because they have a residential permit, so. I just wanted to make sure that that was all very clear, that-
... vehicles in that block that don't leave very often, so, and we won't have any parking for, to serve customers if we don't-
Like, there's a particular van that's there, and it never moves, if they parked in there without this exception.
The green one, the brown one, or the blue one?
All of the above.
The resident at seven twenty, for example, who, a resident who lives on that block, can they park there all day with a residential permit?
Not in those two stalls. Not in these two stalls.
Those two stalls, okay.
We're only going to take two stalls.
Okay. So, the recommendation of staff is the adoption of the ordinance as amended or as revised tonight, thereby updating POMC ten point twelve regarding parking, standing, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance thereby updating Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter ten dot twelve regarding parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city, with final form approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion on these parking changes? We're voting on adopting an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter ten point one-two, Establishing Regulations and Fees Related to Parking, Stopping, or Standing in Certain Areas of the City. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to seven E, Adoption of a Resolution Adopting the Final Platte of Eldon Trails Division One, McCormick Woods, Phase Five. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. The city received a final plat application for a portion of parcel D at McCormick Woods. The phase is identified as Eldon Trails Division One and was granted preliminary plat approval with conditions by the Kitsap County Hearing Examiner on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven. Division One of the Eldon Trail subdivision creates thirty-three single-family residential lots. The applicant has installed or bonded for roadway illumination, roads, sidewalks, landscaping, water and sewer, and storm drainage improvements. Streets within this final platte are public use and will be accepted into the city's road system. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution granting approval of the final platte of Eldon Trails Division One.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt a resolution as presented, granting final plat approval for Eldon Trails Division One.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ashby. Discussion?
Can you tell us a little more about these houses, sort of the range that they're projected to be, or are they two-story, or three-story, or single?
I don't know about what is proposed on each individual lot. We have received building plans for some of these lots, and plan review has begun on those. I know that these lots mostly are on, Mayor, you may have to help me, I think it's whole twelve?
Twelve.
Yeah, so, these are slightly larger lots than some of the others in parcel D, which are part of future phases, and so I would assume that these are slightly higher-end and larger houses compared to some of the houses that may go into future phases of the development, but in any event, they're, you know, this plat was approved in two thousand and seven, and so their vesting through their development agreement goes back a long ways, anyway. So, this is the first thirty-three of one hundred and seventy-two for parcel D.
That was my question. So, this is just a component of the one seventy-two, thirty-three of them.
I would say, I would just like to make the comment that when I looked at the documentation we were given, I was very pleased at the size of the lots, because they are not the size that we've been looking at, at some of the infill developments we've had in the city, so it was kind of refreshing.
Other comments? Questions? Okay, we'll be voting on Adoption of a Resolution Adopting the Final Platte of Eldon Trails Division One. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Was there a question?
Well, I just had a question. Why did this come before us and not the Hearing Examiner?
Platts are approved by city council, preliminary platts go to the Hearing Examiner.
Okay.
Okay, we're on to item seven F, Adoption of a Resolution Approving Contracts with Puget Sound Energy for the Schedule Seventy-four Undergrounding, Conversion, and Transmission Main Relocation in Conjunction with the Tremont Widening Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. In two thousand and five, in conjunction with the Tremont Street Widening Project, the city of Port Orchard entered into a Schedule Seventy-four Underground Conversion Agreement with Puget Sound Energy. In two thousand and seven, Puget Sound Energy provided a preliminary design pursuant to the city-provided project description and scope of work at that time. In two thousand and thirteen, during the completion of the right-of-way acquisition phase, the need to relocate several transmission main poles came to light, and the need for a facility relocation agreement was realized. Since then, the city and PSC have cooperatively maneuvered through various design changes and construction phase fall starts. In two thousand and sixteen, with the successful acquisition of needed construction funding from the Transportation Improvement Board and the Puget Sound Regional Council, the city and Puget Sound Energy were finally able to move forward with the completion of the project design and the associated agreements. In conformance with the Schedule Seventy-four Electric Tariff as established by the Washington Utilities Transportation Commission in two thousand and two, the Schedule Seventy-four Underground Conversion Agreement provides for a sixty percent PSE, forty percent city cost share for both design and construction costs, and the facility relocation agreement requires one hundred percent city-provided funding. In the fiscal impact statement, there is one correction in that the estimated agreement costs, what I wrote was estimated agreement costs captured within the project budget, which is true. All these costs are as part of our overall project that we've been discussing, and in error, I need to strike in the approved budget, because that hadn't been done yet. That's part of a budget amendment that is to come. I know that one of the concerns that we have that we'll be discussing, or will discuss now, is if we sign these agreements, what sort of commitment are we committing to? And so, in talking with the Puget Sound Energy today, for both the Schedule Seventy-four and the relocation agreement, on the Schedule Seventy-four, the city in two thousand and twelve, I believe, they already paid eighty-one thousand dollars, eighty thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars for that design. That was a hundred percent design, because at that point, it looked like the project was going to die, and PSE had to clear their books, and so the city paid that amount. If we complete the project within five years, we're going to get sixty percent of that back, of that total cost of eighty thousand. As we move forward and execute this agreement tonight, there's, other than any specialty item, if there's a particular vault that isn't standardized, that we can't return, which I can't think of anything that isn't standard, that's the only thing that we would owe if for some reason we didn't move forward with the project. So, anything in the Schedule Seventy-four or in the relocation agreement, the costs are basically borne as they commence work. Again, other than something that may get ordered in advance, any standard things that get ordered between now and June can be returned. So, when we award a contract in June, that's when this million dollars of PSE work that's in the project budget starts being expended. If for some reason we don't move forward, we haven't expended anything. The only other cost that we would anticipate if the project didn't move forward would be, will be, will be coming before you with another contract with Berger ABAM for the Construction Administration, Construction Management. We approve one contract for the final design piece. A supplement to that agreement will be a substantial number, between a million and a half and two million. It's in the eighteen million dollar overall budget. It's always been there. It's a two-year project. Same thing there. Other than a nominal ten thousand dollar-ish for bid support, once we, because local programs, Washington State Department of Transportation, local programs in the city have not yet negotiated that CACM contract, so I don't know how much of that is going to be bid support. Once we do know, then it'll be a fixed number that we'll know will go to, well, it's not a fixed number, because it depends on how many requests for information addendums are issued, but there will be expended effort between, say, April or March and June when they, when we, or May, when we open the bids, and have questions that, but again, that's going to be pretty minimal. So, I guess the point of this is to, so, knowing that we have to sign these contracts to keep moving forward, by signing the contracts, at some point, we need to, you know, move forward or not move forward of the project, but there's not a financial risk of signing this contract or the pending Berger ABAM contract, but we have to do these to keep moving forward. So, other than the one change on the fiscal impact, which we know we'll have to do a budget amendment at some point to bring the project in, and I can't think of anything that wouldn't bring the Tremont project moving forward. Staff recommends adopting a resolution approving the PSE Schedule Seventy-four Underground Conversion and Facility Relocation Agreements as needed for the construction phase of the Tremont Street Widening Project scheduled to commence in the summer of two thousand and seventeen. So, we're still on target, working hard every day with local programs and the Department of Transportation and Berger ABAM to get our final plant spec and estimate approved, our Division One specs, our public interest findings for the Buy America. That all has to be approved so that we can go out to add, and we need to go out to add as soon as possible. The longer we wait and we get further into the summer, the higher our bids potentially are going to be, so. We're really pushing to stay on schedule, and of course, we had our TIB funding that wanted a contract awarded by May first. We were able to get that extended to June first, but that's just as a safety net. I don't really want to go there, because again, we're trying to get the bigger contractors. This isn't going to be a RV Associates or, you know, sand excavation type project. This is going to be a Scarsella Brothers. This is going to be a, you know, one of the big boys. So, we need to get this project on their books sooner than later.
Is there a motion?
Sure.
Member Ashby?
I move to adopt a resolution approving the Puget Sound Energy Schedule Seventy-four Underground Conversion and Facility Relocation Agreements as needed for the construction phase of the Tremont Street Widening Project scheduled to commence in the summer of two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Donwood. Further discussion? Mr. Deener?
I just had an observation, and maybe there's nothing we can do about it, but on page one fifty-seven, section five point two, it talks about in the bold lettering, if PSE determines that costs are likely to exceed the relocation cost estimate by more than twenty percent, we'd be notified. It seems like twenty percent is a high threshold to trip before we would get notification, and I'm wondering if that could be lowered to, say, ten percent or fifteen percent. Twenty percent is essentially a fifth of the budget.
We're half of our portion.
Well, again, we're, the project is going to be managed by professional federally-funded type manager, and they're having weekly meetings. I think this is standard language, but they're having weekly meetings and reviewing, so, you know, again, this is standard PSE language in their contracts, but there's other language in there that talks about coordination of materials and work, and what the city needs to do, and what Puget Sound Energy needs to do, so I guess I don't think that there's ever going to be the opportunity to exceed that amount without us knowing well in advance, so that we're never going to get to the twenty percent, I guess is the best answer. I think trying to go back and have them change this percentage is going to be problematic. I think we can, I think it's managed within the process, which again, isn't city staff overseeing this. This is a team of five people, really, that's out there, either out there inspectors, or their resident engineer that's onsite every day, inspector that's onsite every day, then they have their documentation specialist that's in the office, been involved every day, so.
Does PSE's scope fall under the general contractor?
The contract documents have that as part, the coordination of that is part of their work, because our contractor is going to be digging all the trenches, backfilling all the trenches. The utilities for the joint trench are going to be providing all conduits and bolts, so yes. It's just the funding for the materials and that work is through this piece that's in the budget, but in our construction scope and estimate is all the work to put in all that material that's provided, so the answer is yes. It's basically in the control of our general contractor.
Okay, so we could have tighter controls in our general, in our contract with our general contractor?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chang?
Can you tell me a little more about the additional considerations on page seven where it lists the properties that are going to have existing overhead service converted? Are, is all of the overhead, like, from the edge of the property to their building, going to be undergrounded by this? And that's part of-
Not by this. So, there's, so you have the Schedule Seventy-four that's going to underground the power, phone, cable, in the right-of-way, and provide services to the property line. cable in the right-of-way and provide services to the property line. The city made a decision seven years ago, went through the utility committee, yeah. There are two types of projects that really happen. One is where you have a road project like this that has a Schedule seventy-four, you live on that road, you go to work in the morning, there's a lot of activity, you come home at night and there's a notice on the door that says, you don't have power, phone, or cable, you need to contact somebody to connect it. And a lot of projects are done that way, and it's not friendly. And we brought this to City Council and we said, we don't want to do that. So we made it a part of the project initially, where not only were we doing the Schedule seventy-four, but within that eighteen million dollar budget, we were going to do the reconnection, having the general contractor hire a totem or something like that that would follow behind the Schedule seventy-four and then go to the building with a masthead-to-masthead reconnection. The reason we do that masthead is so that we don't get into trying to hook into somebody's nineteen fifty-two power panel that has fuses. So we're reconnecting everything at the masthead so that we avoid that, but everybody gets reconnected. Recently, within the last two months, as part of the final plan review, we found out that in the original environmental studies, that the area of potential effect, or the APE, did not include each individual house. Therefore, if we wanted to have it as part of our general contractor's work to make that connection, we would have had to go to and redo our entire environmental process, which we weren't going to do because we'd have to go to every house and have it determined if it's part of OHP, you know, the Office of Housing Preservation. So we didn't want to go down that road, obviously. So how we're moving ahead on that right now is the general contractor is still doing all the Schedule seventy-four work and it's stubbing out. The city then will hire through a separate city process, a contractor to do the work from the property line to the building, just like we're doing, and that cost is still part of the overall eighteen million. It's always been a line item in there, whether it was under the general contractor or ours, it's always been a separate item. So there's no cost increase, it's just how we're doing it is going to be different. So if you live on that street and you go to work and you've got disconnected power by the time you get home, you're going to have reconnected power.
So it's going to be connected overhead? It's not going to be undergrounded?
No, it'll be underground. Everything's going underground.
To their building?
And then it'll be underground, so, and we have easements, when we got the right-of-ways, we have agreements for people to allow us to dig a trench across their yard and make these connections. If somebody chose, if somebody at some point says, I don't want you to do this, then we'll say, okay, but you're not getting, you'll have to get reconnected somehow because they won't have, so all the new utilities go underground, then all the existing utilities stay overhead until all the switchovers are made, and then PSE and Century Lincoln Wave come through and then they remove their stuff. But they don't do that until everything's off the poles. And if somebody chooses to say, I've changed my mind, then we're just gonna, it'll come down and they won't have service. So I don't think anybody's going to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Charity.
Just a question for Alan. Would you kind of agree with all of that as it relates to the fiscal impact that there's nothing else that maybe you're possibly concerned with through this process of budget amendments, what have you?
Well, I, on, on, what I've asked, well, let me start by saying, we'll have a work study on next Tuesday night, and there we'll start to talk about the bonding of the project. And I've asked Mr. Dorsey and I and the mayor to start a biweekly meeting to really start to come up with hard numbers as we move closer to know exactly how much we're going to have to borrow. So this is a point in time where I think we really have to get serious and start to put time on to the actual financing of this project. So no pun intended, the rubber will meet the road, and so to that degree, I think that's where we're at, is more of a serious movement now to really look at, are we going to borrow eight point three million dollars? And is that enough? And what does that mean to the city?
But again, as far as approving this contract or contracts in the future Burge Rabam, the financial risk of stopping is minimal, next to nothing. We can terminate.
Huge moment in time when we open the bids.
Right.
And if we open the bids and it, the low bid is twenty-two million dollars, we got a serious problem.
Well, we're hoping the bids are like eleven million because remember, the eighteen million covers the CACM, the Schedule seventy-four, there's these other pieces to it. The actual construction bid is, you know, twelve-ish, so we need to be down in that amount. If we had a bid for twenty-two, we'd have a, yeah, we would be, we would punt.
I was just throwing big numbers out in the air.
Yeah, we would punt.
So we, yeah, we've got to deliver a, you know, got to go out to bid and get acceptable bids is another, you know.
It's a major milestone.
Major milestone, the project where our next work study, a major component of that is the bonding companies coming and visiting. So there's some big, big milestones coming up here very quickly.
So right now, the biggest milestone that the city has to achieve is the obligation of the funding, and that's what we're working on right now. There are certain things that have to be done to check the boxes so that the state can obligate, and it isn't just the obligation of the one point seven that we got from the feds, it's the TIB eight and it's our eight point three. We have to have that all obligated as a complete project so that then we can award the contract.
Other questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, we'd be voting on adoption of a resolution approving contracts with Puget Sound Energy for the Schedule seventy-four undergrounding conversions and transmission main facility relocation in conjunction with the Tremont Widening Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to seven G, approval of an interlocal agreement with Kitsap County for fire review service. Mr. Bond.
Yes. The city has negotiated an interlocal agreement with Kitsap County to provide supplemental fire review and inspection services as needed. South Kitsap Fire and Rescue is able to handle the majority of the city's projects pursuant to the recently passed interlocal agreement, but in some limited cases, projects may be of a scope and scale which is beyond their expertise. In these occasional situations, the city wishes to send projects to Kitsap County for review and inspection services. The attached agreement sets out the terms and conditions for fire code review and inspections when the city asks for assistance from the county. Staff recommends approval of the proposed interlocal agreement between the City of Port Orchard and Kitsap County for fire review and inspection services. And please note, there was a revised staff report on your desk. The fiscal impact section had been updated. This was sort of a team effort and that hadn't been fully vetted internally, and so we realized we did not budget for this this year, and we're not even expecting to use it this year at this point. But next time we do a budget amendment, we will need to add this to the budget as both a revenue and expenditure as part of that next amendment.
Councilmember Charity.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Port Orchard and Kitsap County for fire review services as presented.
Second.
We'll share in a second. And just for further clarification, remember, we did the ILA with Fire District Seven, and their staff really doesn't have the technical expertise to do a big project. So we, you know, I think we'd like, all like to have a big project downtown or out on Bethel, and when that happens, those are very sophisticated fire suppression systems, and the county has staff that is technically versed in those, and these will, these will be reviewed by the county, and it'll be a pass-through fee from the person developing the project, and that's how this will work. So it really shouldn't cost us anything. It'll be at overtime rates with the county, and county commissioners have yet to, bless this, but their legal has reviewed it, and this came, the agreement came from the fire marshal's office. So I'm confident that they will adopt it. They typically won't take action on something until the other municipality has, you know, passed it. So with that, any other questions, concerns? Okay. Well, you'd be voting on an interlocal agreement with Kitsap County for fire review services. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none. Everybody was kind of hesitant on that I. Motion carries. Seven H, approval of the January twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen City Council meeting minutes. Corelli.
I move to approve the January twenty-fourth minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any corrections, comments, questions on those minutes?
I was not here.
You were not there, so you're going to abstain, I would imagine. Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of the January twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay, we are on to our last business item, which is a discussion of the Code City classification and its effect on the Port Orchard City Code. If maybe our attorney, Sharon Kates, could read the staff report, and then I'll jump in on the next part possibly.
Thank you. The city attorney was asked to provide the city council with information regarding the effect on the Port Orchard Municipal Code of a decision by the City of Port Orchard to reclassify from a second-class city, which cities are governed by Title thirty-five RCW, to a code city, which are governed by the optional municipal code, Title thirty-five A RCW. An initial review of the Port Orchard Municipal Code and the optional municipal code, Title thirty-five A RCW, was undertaken to determine what inconsistencies exist that would require revisions to the Port Orchard Municipal Code. The attached report is intended to provide the city council with an overview of the anticipated revisions to the Port Orchard Municipal Code to provide, to remove inconsistencies with the optional municipal code, as well as to provide some examples of potentially desirable but not strictly necessary changes that may be determined upon at a later date. If the decision is made to reclassify to a code city, a more detailed section-by-section review of the Port Orchard Municipal Code is recommended to ensure all potential inconsistencies are identified and removed.
And so from there, I've put, I prepared a document that I'd just like to go through line by line if we could quickly this evening, and just to kind of create some, these are decision points, I think, and some of them are relatively easy, and some of them might need some discussion. If we get, you know, if they need further discussion, we've got time carved out at our next, in our work study for this very topic. So, because I felt it was important that we make many of these decision points and inform the public as we go through this process, what this code's going to look like when we're done. So we should, if we want to allow sufficient time for a petition, and if there was one filed, and to end up on a November ballot, we need to take action by our last meeting in March. So I just want to keep this dialogue alive. And the first decision point, and I haven't heard anybody say anything contrary to this, is to whether we retain our current form of government or not, which is the strong mayor form of government and our city council structure exactly as it is. And it was my recommendation that we retain that, and if there's any other discussion to that, I guess now's the time.
Well, I think that's a good idea. I don't know if we want to, I don't know if pollute is the right word, but perhaps confuse the issues with one on top of the other. So I think if there's concerns about changing the form of government, we could do that, talk about that later.
And that was, you know, it was on the ballot with a form of government, governance change previously that failed, and I feel pretty strongly that we should not tinker with that aspect of it, so.
I agree. I think the only thing to clarify for people is they might not understand that, let's say we do change to code city, does that mean it would be easier to change the form of government, or is it completely irrelevant? I think that would be something good to explain.
I believe the other requires a ballot measure.
Okay.
And that's why we were on the ballot last time. We can't counsel.
Can't do it council manically.
Yeah. And Mr. Bond corrected me. I guess it's counsel manically.
Manically?
Yeah, and I.
Not manically?
That's what I, you know, so.
Manic.
It doesn't sound right, yeah. Sounds like you guys are manic to me, you know.
Prozac or something.
We'll just mumble counsel manically. Yeah. But I was saying manically also.
Did I read somewhere though that would allow for like wards or districts within council?
We could, we could do that, yes. That is, that is possible.
Right.
And there is nothing to prevent later to further refinement to our code. And there's some things that would require a vote of the people, and there are other things that, you know, counsel manically, that could happen. But for this first discussion point, I believe the intent, and I've heard nothing contrary to that, is we would retain our current form of government.
Yes.
Also to the second one, there was concerns, the very first time we did this, whether or not we were going to retain the planning commission, and that's, you know, an option too. And I haven't heard any good reason that we would want to abolish our planning commission, and so that's the second decision point here, and I think, seeing heads nod that we should retain our planning commission. So that's, the code we'll bring forward. There's the omnibus.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask a question. Retaining the planning commission as it currently exists, what would be the alternative?
You can change the size of the planning commission. You could not have a planning commission at all.
Take those responsibilities.
The planning department, or within the city council? Yeah, you would just, they're an advisory board, they don't have, you know, it's a place to have public hearings and event our development codes, and that's how we utilize them.
All their actions are legislative, right? And all the quasi-judicial are through the hearing examiner?
Yes. It's in essence a, an advisory board to the city council, in lay terms. Other questions on that one? Okay. There is an option too, to pay the city council too, I saw in the book.
If the city councilor pays the planning commission?
Yeah, the stipend, you could, we could.
Oh, the planning commission. You said city council.
No, yeah.
You meant planning commission.
Planning, okay, sorry. The planning commission could be paid, that, we could pay them a stipend if the council chose to.
That might get better attendance at some of those meetings.
Maybe. I floated that idea a while back, and no one, it didn't, it didn't, it wasn't entice, it wasn't an enticement to anybody that I talked to on the planning commission.
Maybe it wasn't enough.
Yeah, maybe it wasn't enough. Well, you know, you guys have all been involved in the budgets, so there isn't a lot to offer. So we have, the next one is the omnibus authority, which creates, provides that code cities have all powers of any city or class of city may have, consistent with the state constitution and not specifically denied to code cities by law. So we would be allowed any authority of a city, allowed of our city our size, in essence, is what that provision would allow. And we wouldn't have to necessarily, as we grew, we would just gain those authorities of a larger city and not have to necessarily take a council action to do that. Is there any objection to that or reservations? So codification, next one is codification of governing statutes. Many of the statutes relating to cities and towns are scattered through ninety-one titles of the revised Codes of Washington, RCW, are included by reference in Title thirty-five A, making them more easily, more readily available and discernible. So what I get, Sharon, you're going to have to help me out with this one. So it sounds like everything falls under thirty-five A now?
You would think, but no, not really. There's, the section thirty-five A is a sort of an overarching governing. It gives, it gives quite a bit of information about how specifically code cities are supposed to go about things, but a lot of the sections of thirty-five A refer back to Title thirty-five, it's just the cities and towns section, and it also refers to other sections when it, when it talks about financing and taxing and things like that, they go beyond what the cities and towns, RCW thirty-five covers. So it does sort of make it easier to see clearly and quickly what statutes throughout the code, throughout the statutes apply to the city.
So would your recommendation for us to, for us to adopt this section? Or does it just automatically happen?
It automatically happens.
It automatically happens, okay. So I grabbed these things out of this book that I passed out to you guys. So obviously I didn't talk to the attorney before I put that one on there. This next one, I think, is pretty, this is probably the only direct. This next one, I think, is pretty, this is probably the only direct, there's, we can potentially change our directors' titles. There's some of them that, as a second-class city, are statutorily called out, like treasurer. And it's more relevant in today's world that we have a finance director. And I've got a bullet down below that we'll talk about some more. Alan's already got a draft of things that he would change in our section of the code related to the finance department. And one relevant, I mean, as a second-class city, we technically issue warrants. Banks don't really even recognize a warrant as a promise to pay. We really sign checks, but they're not checks, they're warrants. I mean, if, we would probably have a difficult time finding a bank to do business with us if we started issuing promises to pay. So, we, you know, we conform with the modern world, even though we're issuing warrants. And statutorily, myself and the clerk sign those warrants. And I think in a, in a, I would recommend that we change to having a finance director and it's more relevant to have the finance director and, and the mayor sign those checks. And the clerk really doesn't have any function to that in a modern, in the modern world, so. Questions on that? Annex, there's a provision for annexation petitions for, by the election method initiated by, than a, I say, I've got than, that's a typo. It's a ten percent petition and that's, there's an RCW that's referenced, so we.
I just wanna talk about that one.
Okay.
Because I guess I didn't understand, or wanted some clarification, how annexations work. Because when I read this, when I read ten percent, I thought it was ten percent of the property owners in the area being annexed. But when I read what was in the paperwork you gave us, it said, "Under the petition for election method of annexation of code cities, the signature of qualified electors equal to only ten percent of the votes cast in the last state general election are required for petition to annex territory."
So, it's, it's a required amount of how many people have to vote?
Did you say the property value?
You know, I, I'm not sure what, what it used to be, but I, because I, that, Councilmember Ashby, that, that sounds familiar, that it was the, the people involved. But it's, this is, this is allowing a, a vote of the, of the, of the people who have been voting in, in local elections or, or state elections to seek annexation of an incorporate areas. So, I think it's maybe just a different way of, of.
It's, it's another tool in our toolbox. I think, I think we can still do a petition, or an annexation, the same way we have, by a petition method. I think this relates to a ballot method.
Yeah, so there's.
Oh, okay.
It's an additional tool, additional tool for annexation.
Okay.
What's initiative as opposed to annexation?
It's a ballot, it's a ballot measure, I believe. Which we have never, and I, I think it exists right now. It's just at a higher threshold. And, and I have yet, in my time on the council, I haven't seen us put any petition, any annexation on the ballot.
So, what I'm hearing is that there are two methods.
Yes.
Okay, one is the property owners of the area to be annexed come to us and say, "We'd like to be annexed," and they have to have a certain percentage for that. And this is another tool, saying the general public could say that and we need ten percent of the people who voted in the last election to sign, to certify that.
To certify that election.
Okay.
So, it gives us, if, if we wanted to take a ballot measure out to the entire city versus just that group of property owners bringing a petition forward to the city council.
Okay.
So, it's an additional.
It's an additional method.
It's an additional tool in our toolbox.
Yeah.
If, if we chose to have that.
So, it's optional.
It sounds, it sounds optional.
An additional, yeah.
Okay. Do we need to talk about that one some more and research that some more?
Well, what if ten percent of the population of, let's say, East Port Orchard wanted to be annexed in the city and they, could they do it if they got ten percent of the registered voters in the last election to do it? I mean, and that is a game changer for the property value. It's just a very different way.
I don't think you're, we're quite right there. I think it's, it's the certification of the election. So, it'd still take a majority of the citizens. It's, I think it's a lower threshold to certify the election. So, if, if, if everybody, if it was a special election and everybody was apathetic to, to the measure and didn't vote, the, the, the certification threshold.
Yeah, and this is just a petition to annex. This is.
But the annexation would be an election and we haven't done elections.
We, and we haven't, we've yet, we've never done one.
This doesn't say anything about it being election. This is just.
Oh, okay. I misread it.
This is just a group of people could bring forth a petition and then how we act on it is not addressed in here.
Okay. So, why don't we, this one, I think, needs further research, so we.
Just some clarification.
All fully understand that. So, if we could, if you could come back, Sharon, to get our work study next week so that we all understand what it is, this option is, and, and before we charge ahead on this one. Okay. The next one is initiative and referendum. There's a, an option to allow, you know, our city to have the initiative and referendum authority. You know, as long, Mr. Ayman doesn't live here, so hopefully it would be used responsibly. It is not available as a second-class city to our citizens, so. And this is something that could be, an option that could be added later and it can also be added by a vote of the people also, if, once we become a code city. So, even if the council didn't want it, it's something that later a petition could be circulated to, to add, add to the city. Do we want, is there?
Good for them.
You, you add it in? Yes, no?
Yeah.
Talk about it more?
More discussion.
More discussion. My, my initial reaction on that one, or to most everything we're doing here, is to leave our code the way it is and get comfortable with being a code city. And then if we wanna add some of these other things in, we can. You know, notwithstanding some of the technical stuff that the finance department may need, but rather than making changes.
Okay. So, the two so far that I've heard objection to or need more discussion are the annexation petition and the initiative and referendum. So, if, or somebody's taking good notes, I hope, so that we can bring, bring those back for further discussion.
Can I add to that, that I think, also, I'd like to have an understanding of what is optional? Like what the change is?
It's, it's our code.
Well, yeah, but it's like, you know, we're saying, these are, these are what the changes would be and these are like the optional add-ons. So, I'd just like to know what these, the list of what those are.
When Sharon gets, once we get to this list that I, maybe, maybe Sharon should've gone first. So, basically, there's a, there's a paragraph in, in what she's gonna present that basically, all of our code as it stands, if it is, is brought forward, other than things that would be in conflict, okay? So, there's things that we need to research to make sure that they aren't in conflict. But beyond that, if we don't make any changes, it's, it's the same until we go in and change things, okay? And then we have these menus of other things that we can implement, okay? Does that make sense? Okay. So, the next one that's, that I, that I noted in the book is the, an option for an LID assessment, assessment collection deferral. So, if we ever did a local improvement district and we had economically disadvantaged people in that area, we could choose to opt them out of that, or, or, excuse me, not opt them out, defer that collection. The, the, the rub to that is, is if, it's gonna take, you know, an example that comes to mind. If Flower Meadows wants, you know, sidewalks to, to, all the way to Tremont and they formed an LID and it's five million dollars and, you know, ten percent of the people opt out, are able to opt out of this, in this provision, it still costs five million dollars. You're just spreading it to the, to the other folks.
But they're not opting out. It's being deferred.
Deferred. It's deferred, but it's, we still gotta pay it somehow.
So, what does that look like? How, how long is it deferred? Is it deferred?
At this, this level, I don't know. So, this sounds like another one we need to research and how, what the mechanism for that is, before we implement something we don't understand. Absolutely. So, I don't know. There's an RCW that's listed and I'll bet it's spelled out in the RCW. So, we'll, we'll bring back more information on that to answer that very question. There's an option for a pro temp council member. So, if someone had an extended leave, you know, you're only allowed to miss two council meetings, I believe it is. Somebody, you know, had to take a, a medical leave, the council could appoint someone as, as a pro temp council member after a period of time.
I personally like that one. I mean, I just thought if someone had to have surgery or, or something and was going to, you know, miss six weeks or two months of council, it would be nice to have a, a full council. And when I read this, that, my question initially, when I had looked at that, is do, is that an elected position? But it's not. It's selected by council, much as similar as to how we, when we have an opening, how we.
Looking at Scott.
Yeah, I'm looking at Scott. No one said. Oh, he just got, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, I was kinda supportive of that, to figure out how we would work that in.
It's like an extended honeymoon or something. They could, we could replace.
Yeah.
No, it's really intended for, just as Beck said, if someone, you know, had some surgery and was gonna be out a month or six weeks, the council could choose to, to, you know, appoint, you know, a pro temp council member.
It's a lot of sense.
Well, the truth is, it's actually been done kind of before by excusing council members. Because historically, there was a council member that was ill for a long period of time and missed many, many meetings and the council excused that member. So, it's been done, but this, there was no replacement for that council member. And so, when we get into some of these major decisions coming up, it does make sense that, to have that extra person, especially 'cause it breaks a tire, whatever, have that option is a good one.
I'm not sure. I, I wasn't around, I don't recall that.
You don't?
So.
Well, I'm just saying that.
That, that council, but I believe that would be conflict of, with RCW 'cause you're only allowed to miss.
You're only allowed to have two or three unexcused.
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 So, they were excusing that council.
Over and over and over, but we're talking about continued absences.
So, it, it could've happened where someone was gone for an extended period of time.
Right.
So, so there is an alternative, but other thoughts on this one?
That makes sense.
No, makes complete sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
One I picked up on was, in particular with our biennial budget and when we were chasing Mr. Cutherty down for signatures on all those bank signature cards and everything, changing the mayor pro temp every year is a nice ceremony up here, but it's a pain in the rear on the administrative side with all the counts and everything and changing all that. You know, I would recommend that when we do the council committee appointments that, and which would coincide with next year, that it becomes a two-year appointment, which then we don't have to worry about elections or anything of that nature. Administratively, it probably makes a lot more sense.
No downside to it.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm on the fence over that, 'cause I do like the ceremonial aspect of it.
There is. That's the only downside.
Yeah, and sort of spread the pain to everybody.
And when I, when I read through this, it, it allows for the two-year, but it also says whatever timeframe we choose.
Yes, that's true. It's our code. So, do we wanna, do we wanna bring that one back to talk about it some more? No?
I think it just give, it gives each of us an opportunity, though, to learn some of what goes with that responsibility. So, somebody could be a council member, never have the opportunity. Just saying.
Yep. So, I'm hearing two that say, "We should leave it the way it is." I'm hearing a couple saying, "We should change it." I think we should bring this one back next.
Yeah.
Let everybody think about it for a week. Bring that one back. I don't wanna get hung up on it.
Yep.
Allowing action at a special meeting. Would've been nice at Christmas to be able to not have that meeting, so.
And that's, if I recall, covered under RCW pretty strictly, so.
Correct.
Shouldn't be any issues.
So, we didn't have any choice. It is a second-class city, so as a code city, we can, I mean, the meetings still have to be published, have to be noticed properly. All of those requirements still exist. It's just, we can do things, other things at a special meeting. Obviously, the development agreements, you know, the ability to, to do those, I think, they're just gonna, that isn't anything we need to do. We're just gonna have that. You know, it's just something I was pointing, pointing out. You know, we've gone through a bunch of gyrations here with a special utility district here for McCormick. As a code city, it would've been much easier to do that as a development agreement. And I've got some folks that I've been talking to about forming a local development group to buy out a property owner somewhere in our local downtown. And one of the first things they mentioned is, "Well, we're in our due diligence period. We're gonna wanna enter into a development agreement with the city for master planning, everything." And I said, "Wow, I'm not sure that we have the ability to do that right now, but we're gonna change that soon."
But that, that's an automatic, I think.
It is an automatic. I was just bringing.
So, the annexation one, that's an automatic. I don't think that's, that's.
You don't, you don't believe that's.
Optional?
No, I don't think it's an optional and I think that it changed, yeah.
The, the A's are covered under RCW.
Yeah, they are. I was just bringing it forward as, as a reason we wanna do.
Right.
Be, be a code city. I spoke already to the warrants and the check signing. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Sharon and she can talk about what she prepared.
Right. So, I wanted to give you an idea. So, when we, when, two, three weeks ago, I think it was January twenty-fourth city council meeting, there was a request that I give you some idea of how different the code would look if a decision was made to reclassify to code city. And so, what I did was look at RCW thirty-five A, which is an optional municipal code, municipal code for code cities, and compared it to the Port Orchard Municipal Code. And it's, those are both fairly lengthy documents and so I, I didn't fly spec, but I did, I, I was able to take overall sections of, that affect, say, personnel administration and, and look through there and, and see that, you know, there weren't any, any particular conflicts. Or I looked, I looked through the Port Orchard Municipal Code to find where there were references to particular RCWs and checked to make sure that those still applied or if they didn't make those changes. So, the, the main story is that the Port Orchard Municipal Code doesn't need to change very much at all. There are, there are a few changes to, to references to RCWs and there are a couple of places where there, there, I did find a couple of inconsistencies or unduly narrowing the powers that were, specifically the special meetings. The second-class city statutes require, you know, certain things. It's not required under the optional municipal code anymore. So, we wouldn't wanna leave in that second-class city language. We'd wanna change it to the expanded code city language. So, but on, on the, on the first run-through, I didn't find particularly many of those. So, what I, what I provided to you here was just the, the RCWs that, that explain that the, the Port Orchard Municipal Code, everything in there stays the same unless it's in direct conflict with the, with the optional municipal code. And also, this, this second RCW on the, on page one eighty-four is the one that, that says the omnibus authority. You know, if you become a code city, then you have all of the, the authority of any city of any class, unless it's, they're in conflict with, with the optional, optional municipal code. So, what I've tried to provide to you here is, is an overview of what, what changes you can expect to see. The majority of the changes that you might eventually see are the ones you'll choose to make yourself, to incorporate some of the, some of the things that the mayor was just discussing. They aren't required. They're still powers that you, you would have under code city statutes. But it would be probably in the best interest of the, the public to know, to have, you know, some clarity within our own code regarding, regarding those things. So, what I've provided here is some examples of what I, what I found when I went through the code of things that might, in red, do need to change and things in green that could change should you decide to make those changes. So the first one is just to make reference to the optional municipal code as part of what the, the city's code is. The code is adopted, the previous RCWs still apply, but the RCW 358 also applies. So it was, that was added there to just for clarification.
Sharon, to clarify here, in the red there, the city council positions, you got called out. We would then fill in those dates so that this November's election, we're, we're having exactly what would have happened if we were a second-class city. Three of our council members for four-year seats, one council member for a two-year seat, and then, you know, two years later, the mayor and three council members on this side of the room and this two-year seat. So, you know, we just got to fill in those blanks.
Exactly.
To mirror what we have as a second-class city.
Right. So, yeah, right. So the city classification is just saying, we are now under the optional municipal code. And just to clarify, everything's staying the same. Here's how it's all going to work, just so there's no confusion about how, how does this affect how all these things are, are happening. So, thank you for pointing that out. That's, yeah, that's.
And I notice you have the section, filling council positions in red, too. Is there a difference between what we currently do and what this says?
No. So this, this city classification section is something that I, I took wholesale from what the city of Edmonds had done when they became a code city. They became a code city from, they shifted from a third-class city to code city back in 1971 or something, right after the code city optional municipal code was adopted. So, so we, we may not decide that we don't need absolutely all of these sections, but this is.
When I read that, it's exactly what we do. So I was just.
Right.
Here, here's what I missed.
Right.
Doesn't sound like I did.
So it's really just, no, it's really just a, a way of, of making it clear that the city has become an optional municipal code city to the extent there's any confusion about how that works. Here's, here's how it's going to continue to work for us.
Here's how we're going to do it.
So that's, that's the, the main change that you'd probably want, that you would want to make to, to make it clear. And then I, one of these, so, city staff was kind enough to, to give me some feedback about the kinds of things that they would want to see in a new, a new code. And so I included one that Clerk Reinerson provided as something that she would want to see, just clarifying how claims against the city could be made. So this is just an example of something that the, the council might want to consider, including just to make things clear, more clear for the public and easier for administration purposes. The, the council meetings, the, the optional municipal code has a whole section on not only how the mayor council form of government is going to, to work, but also how, specifically how council meetings work. And it's, it's not, it's not very different at all from, from the way the city currently does things. So it addressed some things that they, that our current code doesn't, but our current code is pretty comprehensive when it, when it, you know, discusses how city council meetings are to be run. And so there's nothing in there that needs to change, except for possibly this, this special meeting section, which this language, the, the crossed-out language is in direct conflict with the optional municipal code. And the underlying language is, is what's in the optional municipal code regarding how special meetings will be handled. So that's a conflict that, that I would want to be adjusted. And I just, as an example of something that, here's a slightly expanded type of authority in the, the mayor and city clerk section. You don't have to have that in there, but you might want to, to expand, you know, just make it clear that you're, you're going to expand, acknowledge your expanded authority with regard to the, the mayor and city clerk and their duties at city council meetings. The appoint of officers, that section is just changing from the reference to second-class city statute to the optional municipal code statute. Same with surety bonds. So I didn't put, I didn't put the whole thing in there. I just made that change. The biennial budget is, is something that perhaps the treasurer would, would argue is something that really does need to go in there. It, it, I think it probably is one that you probably would want to put in there, but that's not my, my decision to make. But I, I included that as something that's, it's an optional section that you probably would want to consider incorporating. The garbage and refuse, these are, there are two or three sections in here that just talk about liens, and there's a portion of the optional municipal code that talks about liens, but it also refers back to the, to the RCW that we've been working under. So it doesn't really change anything. It just, I just put that in there to show that, yes, optional municipal code applies, but so does the other statute that the city's been working under, so. Same, same discussion with the street vacations and how they're recorded. There's just an additional statute that, that you'd want to refer to. Water and sewers, the same thing with liens. It's the same statute. And same thing with liens under storm drains utility. So just minor changes there. So that, that gives you an overview. Now, I think because they are, you know, extensive, I'd want to, to fly spec everything if, if his decision is made to, to, to move to a code city. But I, I'm, I'm not feeling like I'm missing a bunch of stuff. I, I, I think there, there is not going to be a whole lot that's going to change, but just to be sure, I'd want to make sure I went through absolutely everything and make sure there wasn't any, you know, inconsistency that was sort of lurking there that I missed on the first pass.
Questions for Sharon? So I think we're going to bring this, the intent is bring this back to talk about it again at our work study. We've got about 30 minutes carved out there. We've got a few pieces of this that we want more discussion and more information on, I think. The intent is, is I believe that we were, we need to take action on this last meeting in March. I think we probably need to probably hold a public hearing on it that evening and probably even the meeting before that.
I think we've already noticed for a public hearing, the last, our last meeting in February, have we not?
That's a good thing, I guess. So that we do that on February 28th, since we've noticed that. So it sounds like we're going to have a, a hearing on it the end of this month. And then we can continue that hearing into March if we choose to. And then I believe we can have some more dialogue in March as work study if we, if we still feel we need it. But when we need to take action there at the end of March to meet some of the deadlines that, that are out there. So, everybody comfortable with that direction?
Mm-hmm.
I'm cozy.
All right. Sounds good. So let's move on to, where are we at on the agenda? Council committee reports. Finance committee meeting is a meeting in the morning with the state auditors for our exit conference. I don't believe, like, we've had a meeting since our, since then, and Mr. Clausen isn't here. Does anybody have a memory better than mine?
What I'm remembering is we have the, the audit exit interview tomorrow morning, and then I believe we have our regular meeting scheduled on the 28th at 7:30.
Correct. Yeah, and that's what's on the agenda here. So economic development, tourism. I know you met last day or two.
We met yesterday, as a matter of fact, and we started our meeting as we do now with a 30 minutes devoted to interaction with our board members from the Port Orchard Bay Street Association and the Chamber of Commerce. That particular discussion, we recapped our first Roger Brooks presentation, and the POBSA at their January meeting had an open forum, and we discussed some of the issues that they had brought forward. And we're, that will continue until next month. Then we spent most of our time working on our tourism promotion strategic plan. Clerk Reinerson has brought forward information for us, and we're working on that. We intend to have a finished product available at the May work study. That's our hope. And that we can come back and hopefully have something in the form of a, the, a final product for council in June. The other thing we talked about at our meeting was the trademark of our wayfinding logo and the policy for the use of that image. We've already had this at work, one work study, and Clerk Reinerson brought forward an application, a license agreement, some other documentation that needed a little bit more refinement, but we should have that forward at the March work study also. And then we spent a little bit of time just having conversation with the chamber and POBSA and council members about what parking is available downtown, again, and how we're going to disseminate that information. And Clerk Reinerson's office is working on a new brochure that we will have on our website, and we will have it attached to our public event toolkit. So, and that was our meeting. We will meet again the second Monday of March at nine o'clock here in council chambers.
Okay. Thank you for your report. How about the utility committee?
We'll be meeting Monday, February 27th at 9:30 a.m. That meeting was changed due to the closure of City Hall. And sewer advisory meeting will be March 15th here at City Hall, 6:30 p.m.
All right. And work to land use.
Okay, so I'm going to give my January 18th report for that meeting. So the first item was, we, we talked about parking at the Port Orchard Industrial Center. A prospective tenant wanted to use Lloyd Parkway for parking, for extra parking, and noted that others were doing that. The committee discussed that that ride was never designed or intended to have parking on it, and that the width of the road is not adequate for emergency vehicle equipment. So we recommended that the tenant explore off-site parking agreements or other options for parking. We noted that there was a lot of other vacant properties in the area, so that there could be some relief with that. The second item was a discussion of the City of Tacoma Residential Infill Pilot Program, and Director Bond provided us a little handbook that Tacoma had put together, which gives a number of options for additional residential housing in neighborhoods, including accessory dwelling units, tiny homes, multifamily development in single-family zones, cottage homes, and, and some of those kinds of tools. We thought that some of these tools might be useful for the City of Port Orchard, but also felt that it was worthwhile waiting until the Unified Development Code was adopted, and then taking a more extensive look at that. And we indicated it would also be a discussion, discussion item at the March retreat. Last item, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about, but it was zoning revisions in the downtown overlay district. We didn't talk about it a lot because it's something that the Economic Development Committee is looking at. But essentially, we talked about the possibility of having several downtown commercial zones instead of just one. And we also felt that this was a good March retreat topic as well. And additionally, we talked to that McCormick Woods has approached the city with some ideas about some zoning regulations that would allow them to build homes with different setbacks and different design standards than they currently are required to stick with. And the developer was going to provide a draft proposal for site and building design standards that we would look at at our next meeting. That's it. Are there any questions?
I just shared that those draft regulations from McCormick Woods went to the Planning Commission. They had some of the same concerns I had. Well, in principle, I like the idea that they brought forward. I think that it would be, you know, positive for, for the community. One of the concerns I had is that the, the, the controls were with the homeowners association versus the city, and the Planning Commission shared that same concern. And I think if we're going to do this, I think this should be a tool in the toolbox for other community, you know, other developments, and not just one area of the city. So I think maybe we need to incorporate those rules or design guidelines, maybe unfold them into the other project that we've got going for the same thing, so. So it was going to be on the work study in March, or no, next, in March. When was that, or next week?
I think it'll go back to land use in March, and then potentially work study.
It's going to be at the work study next week, and we weren't ready to, so we're pulling that from, from the work study.
Okay.
Just because we just don't, we're not ready to do that yet.
So we're looking at our next, when are we looking at the meeting, then?
For the land use?
Yeah.
That's for you and Sean and Mr. Clausen to figure out, who's not here this evening. So the meeting tomorrow morning's been canceled.
Right.
Because of the state auditors exit on, so, sorry, I sent some information that pertained to that.
I, I have that on my calendar, at least for the 15th of March, unless we need to change it to a different day, but that would be in the morning.
So it doesn't sound like that date works for Mr. Carchardi, and I know it doesn't work for my, myself either, so. Okay, we're on to lodging tax advisory?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Is Christmas around the corner? Chimes and lights?
It is. So that meeting will be Monday, February 27th, 3:30 p.m., and we will be discussing Christmas holiday decorations for the city.
Never too early to plan for Christmas.
No.
Okay. Mayors report here. Share with you, I met with the new owners of Leader International, that they are, Leader International is a site furnishings business in our industrial park. They're probably the, I believe they're the second-largest manufacturing business in our city. The Flarities sold the business to a gentleman that has operations in, similar operations in Mexico, Texas, Minnesota, and the Bay Area. He's very excited for this. This is the, by far, if you've never toured this, this is a first-class operation here. Very excited. He's being squeezed in the Bay Area. If you're a tech industry, they love having you there. They're not so excited about manufacturing, so we had some discussions about how much, well, I would love for him to bring those jobs to Port Orchard and expand his operation here, and there's plenty of room in that building to do that. So I had a meeting with the CEO of Land Title, and he is finishing up plans to submit for his property across from the post office. Bruce Titus was storing cars there. That's Land Title's property, and they're going to build a new office building there and expand their operations in Port Orchard. So that's exciting. I know that our police chiefs in negotiations with the state on one of the buildings at the Armory for our police department to use as storage. We currently use a office, former office building and its garages on Tremont that's going to be demolished. And so we need to move out of there. And those negotiations are going very well. And it appears it would be revenue-neutral, because we have to, police department has to pay the street fund for the use of that storage. And we have another building up in the industrial park, too, that the police are using. So we'll be able to consolidate and then pull some of this, allow Public Works to better use that other space. I gave you guys a spreadsheet, and it's just a snapshot. This is Housing Kitsap from our, our retreat. Sorry, staff, I didn't share that with you, but it, just jump to the bottom line, and you can kind of see the problem, long-term problem that Housing Kitsap has. They've been looking to get out of their very expensive lease at Norm Dick's. So there's, there's four potential solutions to that problem. If, if it doesn't get fixed, the agency won't exist in three or four years. One of the solutions is that they need to reduce their rent expense. The Norm Dick's building is extremely expensive. They aren't the housing authority for the City of Bremerton. They have their own. And the triple net charges is extremely expensive. So we're looking to move them out of the building. They're reducing, there's about 50,000 in operational expenses that we think that can be achieved. They need to get back in the development game. I know that's what got them in trouble, but it was also the type of development they were doing and the economic downturn that really caused them the problem. They, they, they receive chunks of money in development fees for the type of housing that they do. And so part of the solution is, is them developing property. There's a project in Pauls Bow they're going to do. And there's two other potential projects that are in about a $15 million range, not the $100 million range that they were, that completely went sideways. They lost 40 million on. And ultimately, we might have to, all of the jurisdictions, no sooner than 2019, because what I shared, and so did Mayor Erickson and Mayor Tolleson from Bainbridge Island, is that we've all just passed biennial budgets, and we didn't contemplate putting any money to, towards Housing Kitsap. And statutorily, we have an obligation to, you know, do these type of activities. As we saw when we went through the exercise with the fire district to hire our own employee, we started about $120,000 with benefits. we started about $120,000 with benefits, and I think we'd be much better served to kick in $50,000 or $75,000 if we, if we have to, you know, to keep this agency afloat, provided all the other member agencies are, are doing that, too. And there's some discussions, too. The county gets some filing fees, and so they have a source of revenue that the rest of us don't, and they have a process for allocating those, and Mayor Erickson's pointing to, to those dollars, too, that maybe they need to be part of the solution, too. So I just didn't want to surprise you. This is something that I know when I first got on the council and, and the housing market was crashing, that we, we knew there was a serious problem at house, at the housing authority. The county's really the bank to this right now. They've refinanced all their debt, they've got a 40-year debt repayment program, and we need to make that go away sooner than that, so they can perform, perform their mission, and, so I just didn't want anybody to not have information that I didn't have.
Quick question, what is the rent that they're paying?
This, what you're seeing, this is just a snapshot out of this page. What you're seeing there is operating revenue, which is their rents that they're receiving.
That they're receiving, yeah.
It isn't, it isn't on this page.
Okay.
It, I, this was just-
It's probably inter-general and administrative, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I was, the reason I brought this page was just for the bottom line, so you can see the bottom line.
Yeah, that's pretty shocking.
It is very shocking, so. Anyway, I've spent enough time on that. The more information as it comes, we're, we've got an agreement with the county, the agency does, to allow them to sell the Norm, Norm, Bremerton wants to buy their space. They're gonna get $2 million for it, and the current ILA, what the county says, any assets they sell, the county gets the money.
Oh, okay.
And so the county has provided that debt relief, so they can go out and take that $2 million and buy an office. They need 10,000 square feet, and to have all their employees in, in one office space, so it appears they're gonna be allowed to do that and reduce their, their rent expense that way. They'll own it, their own building, and not have triple net fees the way they do at, at the Norm Dick's Center. So, other, I know, it's kinda sobering numbers, so. When I, so I met recently with the Latter Day Saints, and for years, they've been doing a, a day of service in our community typically in the spring. Last year, they did Van Zee Park, and they cleaned up limbs out of McCormick Village Park, and they came to me this year, and we've got a couple of project ideas, and they said, why, why can't we, why, why, they asked me if I would reach out to the service clubs and the community as a whole, and, and let's have a day of community service and expand the number of projects we do. And I thought that was a really good idea. And so with your guys' support, it'll involve us buying, you know, a little more beauty bark and, and things of that nature, but it'll relieve load off of the Public Works Department, 'cause we're gonna go out and do some labor, and I, I would hope that you guys would join us. So projects we've identified, Clayton Park, we were already gonna do an irrigation system this year, so Public Works will do the irrigation, and we'll spread topsoil and overseed it, do playground chips on, on that piece of equipments there, that's there, playground chips at, the play equipment at Given's, spread beauty bark here at City Hall, spread beauty bark at Turner Park at the West Bay Center, and at the mound at the other end of West Bay Center that, that we built with that statuary. And there's a talk of working with ecology and doing a little cleanup project of debris and, you know, rip concrete rubble in front of the West Bay Center, and, and, and it'll have to be, I believe we have a low tide at noon, so.
What day?
What day is that?
April 29th is the day. So I'd like to do a press release, and I'd like to talk to some service clubs, and maybe we can get a couple hundred people around town to come out, and, and if you've got other ideas.
We could weed.
You can weed all you want.
Everyone picks up five weeds.
Okay.
And then be done.
I'm getting lengthy here, so let me get the last couple things here. There's a, I shared some information about House Bill 1089, which we are currently opposed to because the county wants to accelerate. They wanna align everybody's comp plan, you know, for all the counties. The cities, what I shared with the county commissioners, they have more la, long-range planners than we have in our entire planning department, so it's a big deal to us to move our comprehensive plan up a year. So that's, if we could, you know, move the date back, we're totally okay with the idea of aligning our comp plan dates with, you know, the rest of the Puget Sound, but as the bill is presented, we've got serious reservations about it, just because of the expense to, to a small city.
Well, lack of coordination.
Yes. So the other one, I've been sharing a number of emails with you guys over the Small Cells Network, and really, in a nutshell here, the, the cell companies wanna be treated like Puget Sound Energy, you know, but the difference is, they don't provide service to everyone. They, they're only looking out for their individual interests, okay? And they, and they, so then they also want a permitting process that can't be appealed by the public. And so there's some, so we've got, the A W C's against this, the industry's hitting pretty hard and heavy on this and has some support at the legislature. So Le Brown has been working, attending a number of meetings on this issue, and I've been sharing a number of emails with you guys, too, on, on the progress on this, on this bill, so I think we have problems with it. Other issue, I had a meeting last week with the residents of Perry Avenue. Remember, at one time, we were gonna run the well 10 water main down the middle of their street and rebuild their street? So I shared with them, good news is that they aren't gonna have to, you know, endure a year or more of construction on their tiny little street, because we're not, it's cost prohibitive to put that water main down, on their road. The bad news is that we don't have any funds, we've got a 30% design, we don't have any funds in the current budget to complete that design, which would be about $100,000, and we're looking at about a million and a half dollars to actually do those street improvements, so it's really gonna probably be one of our next, like a stormwater grant, or looking for opportunities there after we have a 100% design. But I assured them that I would convey to the council that the importance of putting that, finishing that design in our 2019 budget. We heard about the cold weather shelter. We aren't getting as many people, but we had 60 volunteers come out and be trained, and they've never seen that kind of-
They did two trainings, too.
And they've done two trainings. The first training had 60, how many were at the second, Fred?
About 20.
20, so that's, that's outstanding. Plenty of volunteers, no homeless people coming to be.
We've had more volunteers than Kingston and Hansville.
That's outstanding. And lastly, I just wanna thank our Public Works staff for keeping our streets safe during the, the snow and windstorm. Port Orchard Boulevard alone had 30 trees come down, and in two days, they hauled 24 dump foot trucks, loads of material out of there, so. You drive around other places in the county, you see all the debris on the side of the road. Go drive up the Boulevard, it looks pretty doggone good. They're working hard and, and making our city look nice, so, thank you.
We're gonna have some more come down on Thursday, I think.
Are we?
Between the heavy rains on Wednesday and the high winds on Thursday, I wouldn't be surprised if Mother Nature gave us a second round of thinning.
Thinning, that was called.
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go, department heads, and Mr. Dorsey, what do you got for us?
Today, the Wash Dot City interview panel selected Exaltech to do the Segment III Base Street Pedestrian Path Construction Administration, Construction Management, so we'll be moving into contract negotiations for that. We'll also be negotiating the Berger ABAM C A C M contract, and both those projects are, from a Wash Dot review standpoint, are getting documents in order in which to submit for final approval. And then on Bay Street, we've approved and completed three of the four easements for Segment III. We have one last small easement at the Marley, construction easement. There'll more than likely be a request for a street vacation associated with that, and I support that fully. Once we finish that last acquisition, then Universal will be directed to go back to the east side of Blackjack Creek and start working Segment VI through XI, so we, remember, we purchased two of the five homes, and then we jumped over on Segment III. Now we'll go back and we'll finish just northerly, and then easterly to finish up those acquisitions. At the next council regular meeting, we'll have a request to approve a, a work project, small works project to replace the well eight pump and motor. At the end of 2016, that well eight pump and motor decided it was done functioning, so we've been purchasing Bremerton water and relying on well nine lately, so it's very, it's imperative that we get that purchase.
Is eight down at the end of the Boulevard, or is that up at Van Zee?
That's, it's at the very end of Sidney.
Okay.
Old Sidney.
Yep.
So, so yeah, that's, we're without a source right now, so we're trying-
I signed a large check today for Bremers, City of Bremerton for water.
Yeah, we've been having to buy water, so, I mean, luckily, this isn't August, but yeah, we need to get this pump motor project replaced. It's about $30,000 worth of work, so. We've gone through the proper procurement process, and we'll have something on the agenda on the 28th. That's it.
Mr. Martin, I know it was a light night other than one question, so thank you for being here tonight.
I was ready for it.
You have anything else to share with us?
No, not tonight, thanks.
Mr. Bond?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Sharon?
Nothing else for me.
Brandy?
I hate to ruin the, what do you wanna call it, the domino effect, but I do have a couple things to share with you guys. So, first one is that we received the, I think they do the inspection or review every two years from our insurer, from the risk management standpoint, meaning that they'll come out and inspect facilities, City Hall and other facilities, including our parks, to make sure that we are doing everything we can to reduce liability. And so there was a few outstanding items. Again, they come out every two years, and we had some things that we had to resolve. It's completely resolved now. Some of them, if you remember, was replacing or updating the baseball bleachers was one of them. There's a couple other ones. We've completed it, letting them know that we've started the pavement management system, those type of things, so they've signed off on those. So we've closed out all the old ones, and then, of course, they have a couple new ones, which aren't too bad. So only one came out of Public Works Department, which means, which was that they would like more signage on our parks, just basically disclosing our park rules, the operate, the hours, which I did look back, and it looks like the beginning of last year, there was some park rules adopted. They just wanted to be known to the public for safety, security reasons, of what the rules are, what they can and can't do in the parks. And then the other one was more of a recommendation. So our, right now, our fire extinguishers throughout the building are inspected annually. They highly recommend, it's not a requirement, but just highly recommend that staff or somebody check it monthly, just to make sure that the bioextinguishers work. We are reaching out to the fire department to find out what the statutory requirements are, what the legal requirements are, so it's my understanding is that the state only requires it annually, so we're just confirming up that language, and we'll pass it up to the insurer.
So where are those extinguishers? Because I don't believe this building-
Oh, and a map. That was the other thing. We have to check off the inspection monthly, and then also create a map identifying where all of the extinguishers are.
Because like this building, we don't have to have them because it's sprinklers.
Correct. That's what, some language that we're gonna clarify with our insurer.
We're better off just to get rid of them versus-
I have an umbrella.
I was gonna say, don't test a wubber meeting.
And then the last one is this more, it'll always be a reoccurring, it'll always be on the item, or on the list, and what that is, is you'll be seeing an email from me, is that they highly recommend that the city council and the planning commission receive every four years training on land use matters, as well as moratoriums. So we'll be sending out some emails and some links, it's a requirement, or, excuse me, it's not a requirement, it's a highly recommended training. It is to reduce the liability of any land use litigations that would come before the city council, and their thought is that the city council members are trained, as well as our command, uh, planning commissions, ultimately reduces, reduces the liability of future land litigation, so I'll get that sent out.
Which reduces our rates.
Yeah.
Who provides that training?
Um, they, um-
It was web-based last time.
It's on A W, yeah, I'll send you a couple links. I think A W C has it, W C I A has them, which they're not our insurer, but A W C has training throughout the state. I think the most, the one that, the most difficult is the location, so you may have to travel Kent, Olympia, those type of things. However, if the council and/or the planning commission members are interested, they are always welcoming to host one at our City Hall, so if it's something that you guys are interested in, I could reach out to them to say, hey, in a couple weeks, couple months, we'd be entertained to host one here, and what they would do is obviously host it here for you and our commissioners, but also open up to other local jurisdictions, the county, other cities.
Could you find out the cost of that?
Uh, they typically do it at no charge.
Good.
So we've, we've hosted trainings here before, and there was no, no charge, so I would assume it'd be the same thing, but I will follow up with that if that's the direction of the, the mayor and the council. So that's, that's one item. The other item is we, you might have seen an email come from Janine regarding MailChimp. So currently, we have what we call an agenda distribution list, which is basically an Outlook contact list of emails, so we're trying to go away from that and use MailChimp, which is a, it's a, I don't know what you wanna call it, it's a, it's kinda like a-
Email marketing tool.
You can sign up for different information, so for example, if you're only interested in agendas, then when our agendas come up, you sign up for it, we'll send it out to you. If you're only interested in job applications for the city, then you sign up for it, and we'll send it only to you, so that way you're not getting inundated with every city business possible. So we're working on that transitioning of the list. Hopefully, by the end of March is our goal, to get everything transitioned, and as more topics come of interest, we'll add those, the user just goes in and opts in for it. So you see that. And then lastly, we have, which is probably, you probably won't notice, we have made the transition of audio/video recordings. We no longer record them on CDs and archive them and save them. It is now being recorded directly onto our server, so, and Janine magically records it and puts it on the website. I'm sure there's some time involved, but it's not a long process, meaning we take it to a CD, it goes to IT, IT converts it, and then uploads it, and then they put it somewhere else on, so it's just gonna be very seamless and beautiful, and we no longer have to purchase CDs and CD cases, so it's all gonna be just electronic. That's all I have.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we're, so some comments. Jerry?
I was thinking that since you're going to, you've already put in about the Code City in the newspaper, but nobody ever sees those because they're hidden in so much gobbledygook. But you've been writing articles that have been in the Independent about things that are going on. Maybe there could be an article about the discussion of Code City and that we're having a hearing, and so people can see it out front instead of having to go through that section that you can never find anything.
Definitely do a press release and encourage Mr. Smith to help us out with an article. I bet.
Thank you.
Bobby? Nothing? Okay, I think we're adjourned.